Okay.
And then let me know when it's.
So, um, before we get started today, I wanted to read the COVID nineteen announcement for public meetings. Um, pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order. And two five two zero members of the Daily City Library Board and staff will participate in this meeting. Via teleconference, members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream. And submit comments through the live stream website. To submit a comment in writing, please email library board at daily city dot org. And write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and or title of the item as your comments. All comments received by four P M will be emailed to the library board members. And included as an ad to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four P M will be added to the record and shared with the library board members. For the public meeting, persons with disabilities who are required, who require auxiliary aids. Or services in attending or participating in the meeting. Should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the virtual meeting. For the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for April twenty first, twenty twenty, I call this meeting to order. Um, shall we stand and say the pledge of allegiance, pledge of allegiance? Do we? Yeah. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um. May I have your call, please?
Sure, um, President Locarta.
Present.
Vice President Teresa Paul Pooh. I'm gonna unmute you. Vice President Paul Pooh.
Here.
Um, trustee Das.
Here.
Trustee Santos. And trustee Rui Vivar.
Here.
Thank you. I hope everyone's had a chance to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make a motion.
Who shall second the mo-? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. And for the minutes from our last meeting on February eighteenth, twenty twenty, is there a motion to move?
Motion.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. May we have the director's report?
Good evening, President Legarta, members of the Board of Trustees. Welcome back. We've missed you very much. And we wanted to give you an update because the world changed drastically since our last meeting. And we wanted to let you know that even though our libraries closed officially on March thirteenth. We have been behind the scenes trying to provide virtual library services to the patrons in Daily City. And it's, it's been an entirely steep learning curve, as you can imagine, this is new to all of us. But I'm happy to say that a month into this, we have made significant progress in meeting the needs of our community virtually. And taking baby steps in the, in the direction of not just virtual services, but actual materials in the hands of our patrons. And Chela's gonna give us an overview of that in a second. Um, I also wanted to say that this is an incredibly special time for us. Um, not only being personally, it happens to be my wedding anniversary. Thank you very much. Um, but it's also like a huge, it's a huge week.
Congratulations.
Thank you. They said it couldn't be done, but anyway, um, no, it's a huge week for libraries across the country as it is National Library Week. But I think something even more important to us is that this week. Marks the one hundredth anniversary of the opening of Daily City's first public library. It opened on April twenty fifth, nineteen twenty. On Mission Street, if you're familiar, I mean, I'm sure a lot of you visited the old John Dealey Library. When it was still functioning as a library, but for those of you not familiar, it is, was located where the. We see the history museum is currently. Um, it's got a fascinating, fascinating history and we were really, you know, looking forward to celebrating our centennial. And we had a program lined up and a guest author and we've. Joined forces with History Guild and I'm sure D C P L A was gonna be, be part of the whole thing, but. Obviously, because of the circumstances, that's gonna be put on hold. We are not canceling it because we really think it's an important milestone to celebrate in Daily City. We just don't know when that is and as soon as we do, set a course for a celebration. So I wanted to make sure we started the meeting, noting that it is National Library Week. And that it is also coming up, one hundred year anniversary of Daily City College Library. Now to fill us in on all, all of the wonderful things that both. We've done to date in the library, but also importantly, some of the things we have on the short term on the horizon. I am gonna turn over the report to. Chela Anderson.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so as Joseph said, um, we unfortunately had to close to the public. Um, in the middle of last month, um, staff did come in one day, you know, while the library was closed, but after that. Um, we had to go home, um, to shelter in place. Um, so the first, the very first thing we did was just to make sure that nobody had to worry about due dates and late fines or anything like that. So system wide, all items that were checked out as of that date that had the due date extended until June thirtieth. Hopefully that is more than sufficient. If it turns out it's not, um, we will then further extend that. Um, we, um, also extended the expiration dates of any library cards that might be coming up for expiration. And, um. Tried to make sure that, that our patrons could reach us if they, if they had issues with their card. Because we do have a lot of e ressources and we wanted people to be able to use those uninterrupted. Um, so, um, we went ahead and set up a Google Voice number so that we could receive calls. Um, and, um, we always answer, um, the public emails. We have a main email for reference questions. Um, and that's been monitored since we, we closed. And of course, if anyone uses the web forms, um, those go to the, those emails as well. Um, you can also get a library card online, um. In the past, you would apply and then have to come in to complete that process. But we've modified it so that when you, you get an instant card, when you fill out the online form and then you can reach out to us. Um, via email and we will actually provide you with a regular fourteen digit library card number, which will work for. Our entire suite of e resources, um, without any, uh, interruptions. Um, a lot of people are also using the, um, we call the I D C, which is the instant digital card. If you bypass our website and our catalog and you go right to our main, um, overdrive ebook platform. You can use their system for getting a card instantly and a lot of people have been doing that. The usage of that was about sixty percent higher this last month. Um, we're also proactively reaching out to people who have applied for a card. To let them know if they don't, that they can get that for full fourteen digit number. To end that we have all these other services, not just the ebooks. Um, so we, um, started with, uh, looking at our e resources, of course. Um, so we wanted to expand and enhance what we had. There, um, a lot of companies that we work with. Um, came up with offers, which was really wonderful. Um, Canopy, which is our streaming video services. Become, of course, increasingly popular and they had, um, offered an add-on for, um, Canopy Kids. Which is not just kids videos, but it's also kind of, um, like storytime type content as well. So they've added that. And no charge to us. Um, ABC Mouse, um, saw a huge increase in use as everyone's home with their young children. And, um, they increased the number of seats that we have for that, which has been really good. Um, the tumble books, which we've used in the past and, um, haven't had recently. Um, offered free access to theirs, as did, um, another ebook platform, N P, which has a lot of independent press. Um, book browse, things like that. We, um, we focused a lot on ebooks because that is, you know, the, the thing that people were not gonna be able to access was going to be our physical books. We wanted to increase that. So, uh, we got a grant, um, for five thousand dollars from the state. They were incredibly responsive and we started our own kind of. Um, add-on collection to the main system wide overdrive collection. Um, and, um, staff have been purchasing copies to put in there. If you have a Daily City card. And you log in, you will have access to those resources, or those titles, as well as the titles that are shared throughout. Um, but it just, it, um. Offers a little more to our, our particular patrons and we're able to see what they. If they have interests that maybe are not the same as everyone else in the community, communities to ourself, we're able to be more responsive for that. Um, we're also, um, working with the schools to hopefully be able to, um, set up some mechanism for them to be able to have. An ebook platform that's more suitable for their environment. That provides access through that platform to all of the materials that, um, we have and.
Sorry, can you, can you hold on for a second? Can, can everybody else mute their microphones? Until it's time for you to talk because I'm hearing other things in the back somewhere. Please, so if you're not talking, can everybody please put a mute on your microphone?
That better? Excellent. Okay, that is better, actually. I, I had tuned it out. Um, so, uh, with the overdrive, um, as I said, where, um, we've added an additional collection that, um. Is an add-on to the main P L S collection that's just for Daily City patrons and common patrons, of course. Um, and we're particularly putting a lot of materials for teens and children, um, in that collection. Um, we're using that grant that we received from the state, but we're also spending, um, some of our own funds and, and the city is also. Um, pledged to support that. Um, we also, I don't know, um, if you follow us on, on, um, social media, saw that we also added. Tutor dot com, um, that launched just at the very beginning of this week. Um, tutor dot com is a live tutoring service. Um, it's aimed at, um, students K to twelve. Um, but they, it actually also includes resources for adults. Um, it's a, it's something we haven't had in the past. It's a little bit of a more expensive resource to offer because it is. A live professional tutor available seven days a week, um, from eight A M until ten P M. Um, a student can log on, they can, they have a virtual classroom. And that, that tutor will assist with homework or provide general tutoring on all of the core subjects. So we were happy to be able to add that, especially as, you know, kids are learning from home and, um. And, and, you know, as they enter in those middle grades, I know some parents may be struggling with. You know, the different ways that math is being taught now. And so I think this is a support for kids, but also for parents. And as I mentioned, um, it does have some adult resources. Uh, you can get assistance with some, um, resume writing and things like that. Um, that could be really beneficial as people are entering the workforce. Um, let's see, uh, we're, we're also, we're trialing a few additional resources right now and we are. Um, always on the lookout to see what other things might meet our, our community's needs. Reaching out to the schools to find out what they're interested in as well. Um, staff are, um, working on compiling recommended reading lists that are appropriate, you know, for, for a time like this. I know one of the first ones they did was, you know, dealing with stress, um, in difficult times. Um, focusing, of course, on e resources, things that people can get in their hands right now. Um, and then they're also doing resource lists for the website. Um, not something that's for the public in general, but we also have a team of, um, three, uh, employees. Who are working with our three D printers to produce, uh, the ear savers. Um, it's part of a countywide project for the county health, um, service. To be able to get that to make the masks a little more comfortable for them to wear and they'll be exploring what else they can, they can do. Um, and then as Joseph said, we're, um, we're tiptoeing into the, um, area of virtual programming. So our first one coming up, we're extremely excited about this is Dia de los Niños. Which we had planned and we had, um, a group that was, um, contracted to come and perform. And we are just adopting that program to be virtual. Um, we're gonna be using Zoom, similar to this, but, um, in a more expansive way. Um, if, if you're interested in that, I hope you'll check it out. We, we just launched it on the website. Daily city dot org slash D I A, D I A. Um, so you can register from that page. This, the event itself is gonna be on Wednesday, April twenty ninth at four P M. Um, and so they're gonna do, it's a bilingual, they're gonna do music and stories. Um, they're really, it's a, it's a great program. Um, we hope it will go smoothly. And then, um, virtual storytimes, um, you've probably seen some of the nearby libraries have started trying this out. Um, we're, we're gonna do our first trial run for this, um, next week. So, um, hopefully it'll go well and we'll be able to get into a routine of offering that. The book club, we have a book club. It's a small book club and they are meeting, um, via Zoom. So we're, we've gone virtual with that as well. And they are look, um, the adult services librarians are looking at, um, other things we can do. Po, it's National Poetry Month. They're interested in, in putting together a poetry program. And then, um, a community memory project, something that might mesh really well with, um, with our centennial. I think that those two would. Um, be things that would augment each other. Um, and then, of course, summer is just around the corner. Um, the P L S, uh, Children's Committee is meeting and they are, um. They are being creative about how we might go forward with the summer learning challenge. Um, a big part of, of summer learning is coming together in large groups. So if we can't do that, we, we really need to rethink. How we're going to structure that program. And so I look forward to seeing what they come up with. They're very creative people. And then the, the final piece of that is something that, that I think. We actually have just started. We have sent one out. We're looking at holds fulfillment. Um, we had all those items on hold as, you know, on any given day, there's always. Um, you know, hundreds of items waiting at the four libraries for people to come in and, um, pick up. They've been sitting there, we're, they're not gonna expire. We're holding it for people until we reopen, but we're hoping to get them in their, into people's hands a little before that. So, um, we are, uh, staff have gone in and they're looking into, um, packaging them up and mailing them to people. We are reaching out to those people by phone just to confirm that they still want it, that they're at, at the address that we have on record. Um, and, um, if they do want it, then we're gonna go ahead and mail it out. Um, if it goes smoothly, uh, we're gonna roll, we're starting at our main library. We're gonna roll out to the other libraries and then we're gonna. Look into accepting new requests. That's the next step, definitely. So that's, that's what we've got going on. It's quite a bit considering everyone's trying to do that from their living room while, while teaching their kids from home. Are there any questions?
Um, I have a couple. So, um, first I wanted to, uh, salute you guys for. Coming in together and like Joseph was mentioning, this very. Um, sudden change of everything. And that you're, you guys are able to, besides the educators and you guys, you have something going on. So the, the five thousand grant that's from the state, that is allocate to. Probably now distant learning now, distant, distant library. Or how is that grant, uh, divided up?
Well, we've used it to purchase, um, material, e materials. So there, so when you buy an ebook, you're not actually buying a book. You're paying for a license for an ebook. Um, so, um, we purchased a bunch of e materials, either additional copies of popular things. That otherwise people would have a long wait to get through our overdrive. Or copies of things that weren't in the collection already. So the person who typically purchases the physical books for that collection went and, and selected materials. Um, for, for the virtual collection and those are available, um, a lot more. Everything that's, you know, he's already purchased is immediately available for people right now.
Okay, for the tutor dot com, do the parents need to sign in or the child does it on their own?
So, depending on the ability of the child, um, I, like a high school student could certainly just, um, log on. It will ask for your library barcode number. It's gonna look for that fourteen digits. Um, you can create an account, um, with them if you wanted to say, leave your paper with somebody to get feedback. But you don't need to create an account. You can just be a visitor, um, and, uh, just log in anytime between, um, eight A M and ten P M. And get a live person to, to help you. And they're very, they're very committed to helping kids work through their homework, not giving them answers. So they're professional tutors.
And it's available, it doesn't matter how many children locked up, locked in?
So it's a, um, it's a pay per use thing for, on our side. So we have purchased a certain number of sessions and then if we find that the demand is higher, then they will simply bill us in arrears for additional sessions.
Okay.
If people should not be blocked.
Okay, um. The other problem that I have seen is having, um, access to wifi. Not all children or any, a lot of household don't have access to wifi. And I'm not sure if there's something that we can help with that. Um. The other question I have that we have those Chromebooks. Are we able to lend them out or are they still out or they're in?
So the vast majority of our circulating technology, which is the Chromebooks and the hotspots. Was checked out on the, on our last day before we closed to the public. Um, and so those items, you know, normally you'd have a week with them. So people are gonna have quite, quite a long time. They're not due back until, um, the end of June. Um, we did briefly look into, um, adding hotspots because that, that's a thing where there, there is definitely a need. Um, however, it looks like, I think the schools have really, um, impacted availability and, and they're, um. They're not in stock, the hotspots and the Chromebooks are both currently not in stock.
I know that we had three D, two, three D's printers. Is it two?
We have, we have two and then a third one on long-term loan. So three, three at our disposal.
Okay, so, somebody told me that they're in need of helping out with medical with. You know, I don't, I think you guys heard of it. Um, how do we go about? And where we would, would we be able to lend them out or what's the deal on that?
So, um, the county library is working with the county medical center. To make something that they have specifically requested. Um, so, uh, we've joined that effort and so the three, the three D printers. Are actually at home with three staff members, um, and they're working from home to produce, um, the specific thing that the county. Um, medical office has asked for. Once that's fulfilled, we'll look into what other things that we could be using it for to, in the way of P P. Once that's fulfilled, we'll look into what other things that we could be using it for to in the way of P P E or other needed.
So they're at those people's house and it's. Okay. That's beautiful. The Day of the Children, is that right? Did I? The Dear for the Niños, everybody can be able to. The see it.
So it's gonna be like a live program and so you do need to pre-register, right? We've not done this before, so it's a little experimental. I know that there are concerns about, you've probably heard about Zoom bombing and things like that.
Yeah.
That that's why the pre-registration is is required. But yes, everyone's encouraged to join us, we're we're very excited. The performers are really good. If let's pull up their page so we can see it. One moment.
Because I know in Zoom you gotta have a participants of a hundred. Do we need to pay for more than a hundred?
So we we with Zoom, we have. A webinar add-on feature that we've we've paid for so that we're able to do that these types of programs. So we believe that will be adequate.
Okay.
And and if it's not, we'll we'll make adjustments to to enhance the the account so that it works.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add one more thing. To trustee foul pool's remarks because she asked about the three D printers and the ability to print medical stuff. Early on in this, there there was an effort across the country to prevent, to pre. Produce a thing, a device called the Charlotte Valve. Which would connect to a respirator through a scuba mask. You may have seen that on the news, I think it was in Newsweek and Time Magazine and a couple of other places. And we actually did look into that and downloaded the files. It turns out to produce that, you really need to have medical grade nylon filament. And the type of three D printers we have are not really industrial grade printers equipped to do that kind of work. Ours are more of a hobbyist kind of a three D printer that you would buy off the shelf at Office Depot or a place like that. So we did try with varied results, but we we don't have the ability to produce that piece of tech of. Equipment for the hospitals, but with Shayla reference, the ear savers are appreciated from hospital staff. Because if you can imagine wearing a mask tightly around your ear all day. Have a little magical device to take the pressure off is deeply appreciated. So I just wanted to clarify that in case that's what you were thinking.
No, I was talking about those, the tie ones that ties up in the back. Yeah, I I wasn't referring to the. That's a big issue.
So there's, there is another one, it's kind of an N ninety five type of mask, we're not trying that either and it. Fits around the face, but involves glues and and filters and elastic and. It's a little bit more involved and we haven't yet tackled that.
Okay.
What one thing we we might look into, I I know that the county library is looking into is the the clear face shields. And so they're looking at three D printing, the the piece that holds it to your head. And then, you know, you would purchase the the clear material. So it's it's a, it's a, you know, it's a program that's in process and we just wanna ensure that. Whatever we're making and and providing is is what they need and want and and it's not gonna be something that they can't use and it goes to waste.
Yeah, that would be good because I was once asked by a community member. If we can put those in use. I didn't know that we're already using it and that it's at somebody else's house. Right now making it, which is really good. I mean, that would be good to put on something on our website that the library. You know, have reached out in donating that the time. I mean, are they getting paid for it? The people are actually working on making those?
They're working from home, yeah, yeah. They're doing other things because it's it's a primarily a passive thing, you set it up and then it runs.
Would you guys be able to take a picture of, you know, of a finished project and then maybe post it on our our website?
Yeah, I believe it did get, hopefully it got posted, but we'll definitely have to post an update.
We did, we did take pictures. And and just again, if to appreciate what a three D printer does, it is painfully slow. So to present it, I keep saying we're presenting, to produce a solid object. Takes in some cases, six hours or more. So it's pretty much getting the file started and then multitasking on something else and checking periodically to make sure it's still.
To make sure you haven't produced some sort of bird's nest of plastic, yeah.
Yeah, well, at least that we're, you know, that it's some sort of use to to the need. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a few questions myself. So just to kind of piggyback off of Teresa's inquiries on the Chromebooks and the hotspots. There it, so with Robin, my daughter, she actually participates in like a Google Classroom. And we, unfortunately, she has access to a laptop and we have, you know, internet access in the home. How are you all connecting with families who don't have internet access? Are you, is mail going out to them, letting them know what resources are available in the community?
So. Well, most of what we are are providing right now does require internet access with the exception, of course, of mail holds. We're looking into possibly doing some sort of collateral, you know, flyer or something that we could maybe distribute through. Another program, but we have to find a way that we can do that safely and practically. But yeah, it's a good point. I I know that early on. I was reminded, somebody called me, I happened to be in one of the library buildings, just kind of getting stuff locked down. And an older person called and was worried about her holds because she hadn't seen the website. She relies on the phone to reach us, so. I caught that particular call, but I'm sure there were others that were left wondering, so.
And to that point, we had actually talked about. Distributing a flyer with with the information that people can use at at some of the food distributions happening across Daily City. The numbers are growing as I'm sure trustee. Paul Pooh can attest that there's a lot of growing community of need in Daily City and we're trying to reach those folks too.
Even like a packet of like information. Are you, and then this is another question to follow up with that for the team members. So is everybody employed still and working remote?
The full time staff are, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
The the part-time staff unfortunately are not.
Currently, okay. Will they be rehired once we open back up to the public?
Oh, yeah.
They haven't been, they haven't been laid off, so they're still on our payroll, they're still employees, we just don't have hours for them.
Okay, so they're just not getting paid currently, but they're still on payroll?
Yes, and. To the city's credit, at the very onset of this, the the part-time labor force for Daily City. They were allocated one hundred and twenty hours of paid time off so that it would get them through this and nobody anticipated upfront that we would be into this. This many weeks, but so so some of the the part-time staff does have. A smaller paycheck, but a paycheck coming in on paydays.
Yeah, and and most of them, you know, worked a smaller number of hours each each week, so it's it's lasting longer than than. We had feared anyway.
And then I know you mentioned, you know, a patron reaching out to you via voicemail. Are you into the libraries or your office? What's the frequency that we're checking these voicemails?
So the, well, the main lines that people do call, there's there is no voicemail boxes for those. So we have set up a voicemail box at the main library for people to call us back specifically regarding their holds. That but that program just started this this week. Prior to that, we had put out a a Google Voice number, there's one that rings on my phone and then there's one that rings on the phone of a librarian. Who's responsible for answering that during certain hours and then if if she's not answering it, then it could, they can leave a message and she'll call back. And that that number has been put out on social media and is on the website. And the main line, which has a short greeting, includes that information as well.
Thank you. And then this is just for my notes. You said patrons are using Canopy, Tumble, and what was the third one?
ABC Mouse.
ABC Mouse, okay. And then is that, so is each of these programs based on age?
There, so there's Tumble Books, is it's a Canadian company and they they. Put out a like a, almost I wanna say a reading rainbow kind of a a thing where it's like a digital storybook and it reads to you. But then they they actually provided access to all of their products, including they have a romance ebook collection for adults. It's it's a mix. Can Canopy includes a lot of award-winning. Movies, kind of more art house movies, as well as some TV and the Great Courses. And then they have, there's a component for kids as well, so it's both as well. And then Overdrive again, has a lot of materials for all ages.
Thank you, Shayla. Ms. Angela. Going back to what you were saying, now how will we reaching out besides via text, I mean via email and stuff? I was wondering if. They can provide a flyer on all the resources that we have. I am doing Food Harvest at Jefferson on Thursdays and Saturdays and that's from. I'm there at eight till one. I can put it on their cars or hand it to them while I'm doing that. It's a way to pass it out to the community.
Yeah.
Cause I we serve twelve hundred people, so. A lot of those people can be reached by that way. I'm just thinking of ways that we can, you're practicing social distancing.
Right, yeah. Cause that's, that's actually another factor to the social distancing. And, you know, even being careful mailing things out too because. Sometimes they say it's transferred through the paper, you know, via mail. But I mean, no, I appreciate all you're doing, Teresa. I just like, I'm giving Robin as an example because she, her classroom is twenty-two children. And so within Google Classroom, unfortunately, only eight participate. So that has me thinking, you know, what happens to the rest of them? How are they learning even? You know, I'm pretty sure packets are being sent to them, but then when we take it back to the libraries too, right? Like, are there people kind of just, you know, in the dark with information? Where there are resources that can help them, you know, such as Food Harvest or, or, you know, anything that the library has to offer.
Yeah, and a lot of people are not technology savvy as others, you know, which is. Another struggle that we're seeing right now.
Well, and it's definitely something that that libraries are always cognizant of. When we're, you know, obviously pushing so much of our virtual resources, we did wanna ensure that there was staff available. If anyone ran into trouble trying to use them and needed help, support in doing that. So we can provide email or phone or phone help during certain hours for that. Of course, you do have to have internet to access it.
Yeah.
And and one other thing that we did think about. Or remember foul pool, it's if if we cannot have gatherings in the traditional sense how we do for summer learning, we've actually thought also about the food distributions. As a potential place to distribute actual books. So it wouldn't just be a flyer and a link to a website, we'd actually be putting books in children's hands. And we'd even talked about incorporating it into the packet or maybe having a survey up at the front of, you know, the lines move kind of slow. To determine what the age group in the household is and then on the backside, maybe walkie talkie, head to somebody, hey, the the yellow Volkswagen coming up. As a six-year-old and a nine-year-old in the house and to try to find books appropriate that way. So we're we're exploring all kinds of options. We definitely wanna make sure kids keep learning and reading.
It like have like a, you know, like a drive-by book club, you know? But we can send an email to the families that what kind of books and what ages do you? Do you have in your household? And then we prepare those books and they just drive by, pick it up, next car.
Absolutely open to that suggestion. And we don't have our books yet, but typically, you know, that's a countywide effort, all the libraries participate and we usually get pallets of books. And we distribute at all the programs and if we're not having programs, I think the the food distribution is an awesome way to get books in the hands of the children.
Absolutely.
Is there a way to promote the Food Harvest, the our Facebook or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
The, the. The, I I know that recreation has been making that information available. Cause there's some programs are are specifically for seniors and some for for the general.
The school district should, in in school district should and. In our organization, we post a flyer, so.
And Second Horus Food Bank actually has a website that if if somebody calls in need. They're either referred to the website or or the person on the phone will actually tell them where the nearest one is. And we definitely have seen those growing quite a bit in recent weeks.
Which is sad, but it's it is definitely a good place to reach people.
Yes, yes, and numbers say it has been increased tremendously over the course of time.
We'll definitely work on getting some flyers available and if, yeah, any support in getting them distributed would be really appreciated.
Yeah, just let me know. I don't have access to printing them out. But if you just bring it to me and I'll distribute it out to twelve hundred cars.
Wow. A lot of cars. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thumbs up for yes or no?
I I was just checking to see if we had any online comments. And so far, we do not, so.
Okay, that's good.
I have a question in terms of virtual programming, who is the point person for it?
Justine.
Can you hear me?
I have a question in terms of virtual programming, who is the point person for it?
Justine.
Maybe that's Glenn's mic.
I was like, it just played me that.
Go ahead, Justine.
Okay, I'll ask my question again.
I was just wondering who the point person is for the virtual programming. I just love to learn more about it and I know that when we did. Storytime with the trustees, that was really fun. So I would even love to see how we can offer some volunteer services to folks. I know it's switching to virtual is really hard, I'm doing work and I'm. And I know even for teachers, so.
Jayla or I as one person, this is kind of like the team approach. Sarah's friend. Is is keeping the storytime alive. Probably going through either Jayla or myself would be fine for now.
Yeah, we're we're absolutely looking to continue to expand what we're doing and. Respond to to needs as they grow and change in our community and. respond to, to needs as they grow and change in our community and it's, it's a challenging time and, and, and we want to be here for people and make, want them to know that, that, you know, the library is always dedicated. Even if the building is closed, we're here, provide library services.
I think Mayor Sylvester Clint, Clint Sylvester is on. Go ahead.
Even if the building is closed, we're here, provide library.
All right, great. Thank you. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor Sylvester Clint, Clint Sylvester is on. Go ahead.
Thank you so. Uh, thank you so much, uh, commissioners. I just basically.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me okay?
It's echoing.
Um.
Clint Sylvester is on. Go ahead.
All right. Apparently I'm having an echo here. But thank you all for going in on the call. Um, I just wanted to provide a heads up.
All right, apparently I'm having an echo here, commissioner. But thank you all for going in on the call. Um, I just wanted to provide a heads up.
Okay, I think this will be better now. I've spoken with the city manager. And, um, we had a meeting by San Mateo County. And, uh, we came up with something that might be useful for the libraries.
Glenn, are you playing our YouTube video in the background or something?
Um, we had a meeting by San Mateo County. Uh, we came up with something that might be useful for the.
Glenn, are you playing our YouTube video in the background or something?
Nope, nope. I have nothing in the background. My phone is off. Um, how about if I type it in the chat?
Are you playing our YouTube video in the background or something?
Nope, nope. I have nothing in the background. My phone is on. How about if I type it in the chat?
Or maybe exit and then come back in again.
Okay, I'll try that. Uh, I'll, I'll exit.
What seems to be the problem?
I, unfortunately I couldn't understand his comments. So hopefully he, uh, can rejoin us.
A lot of echoing.
Yeah.
I hear what the actual content was.
There's a lot of delay.
To hear him.
Yeah, hopefully he'll log back in. Up.
I don't think your audio is connected, Glenn.
Glenn, are you there? We can't hear you.
Can we move on with the meeting until he's settled in? Is that okay with everybody?
I think he just connected with his audio.
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
Oh, a lot better.
Much better.
All right. I found I had a separate window open for the YouTube live streaming, so there was a delay. All right, uh, again, I'd like to welcome all the commissioners. I'd like to welcome staff. Thank you for having this meeting and thank you for all the work that you've done, uh, and continue to do. I just wanted to provide a heads up that I participate in a San Mateo County. It used to be every day, now it's every other day, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. So, uh, on the last call, a citizen, I believe in Erlingame, used his 3D printer to create face shield. And I've spoken to our city manager and I've asked for the code. And even the county manager, Mr. Callagie, mentioned that perhaps we should approach our libraries who have these 3D printers and they can create these face shields. You think that might be a possibility to look into?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sylvester. Um, we actually have three 3D printers in, uh, in the libraries. They are actually in homes of library employees right now, working at the request of the county on ear savers that they are printing 3D. Um, there has been countywide discussion among the libraries about next entering into possibly preventing their producing the head straps that support the face mask. So that, that is a possibility. Uh, just so everyone is, is aware, the 3D printers that we have in our libraries are very much consumer grade. They're not industrial printers that would typically be used for this type of work, uh, but we're certainly open to exploring it.
That is outstanding and I'm glad to hear, uh, you say, uh, ear savers and head straps. That's good. And, uh, anything we can do to help the community during this time would be great. So, uh, thank you so much for the update. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Uh, you got it. Thank you so much. And again.
Thank you, mayor.
You got it. Thank you, everyone.
So does anybody else have any questions or comments?
We covered a lot of terror.
We covered a lot.
We did.
Um.
Really great to see all of you here.
So it would be nice if, um, Mr. Corinna and Jayla, if you guys can do send the mayor them a report on how those projects are. Because it sounded like they weren't aware that we're already participating.
I actually, um, if you're interested in Monday evening, April twenty-seventh, I'm gonna give not nearly this lengthy of a presentation, but I'll hit on some of the highlights that, that the library is engaged in. And, and in addition to celebrating National Library Week in the Centennial Library, I will share that ticket to the, the efforts of the 3D printers. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
And if you follow us on Instagram and Facebook, uh, look for some photos of our staff actually having, uh, printed some of those ear savers this week.
That's awesome. We'll do that. Thank you. Um, so, um, I really don't have much for the trustees' report. Obviously it's unprecedented times, but you know, I'm grateful for technology and that we are able to meet via Zoom, um, as we celebrate or, you know, not celebrate Library Week. Um, I think it's kind of ironic that, you know, with library, it, because it's Library Week and us having a meeting um, in this way. Um, and you know, it probably hasn't even been done historically, right? So, um, you know, um, we were having a conversation, right? It had this pandemic happen five years ago and, you know, Zoom is not around. Um, was FaceTime around five years ago? It was, right? But I mean, definitely not a group setting. Um, and so we will definitely have a story to tell. We will get through this. Um, we'll work together. We will strengthen, um, our responses when, you know, hopefully nothing like this ever happens again. But it definitely teaches us something. And so, um, you know, I appreciate you all. Um, and you know, you're doing a great job in listening to the community's concerns. Um, so thank you. Um, I had the, so, um, me, Justine and Teresa, we actually had the opportunity of, um, you know, going through with our, um, reading with trustees at the Bay Shore Library, um, about a couple of months back. And, um, I just wanted to, um, kind of share that with you that we, we did end up doing it. Um, we participated in Storytime. We got an opportunity to speak to Patricia and team on, um, you know, their concerns and, you know, how it was going. And, um, when we did the, um, reading with trustees, this was when COVID first started. But they were already seeing a decrease in, um, patrons attending the library. And so now here we are, you know, we can't even have a meeting. And, um, but we, you know, there was like a lot of heart there. The, you know, they still had, um, their concerns with, obviously with staffing. Um, and, you know, outreach to patrons of the library and things to that effect. Um, did you want to chime in, Justine and Teresa?
Um, I think you covered it. Um, I think something that's really cool is that, uh, a set of regulars that come. I think the time that we went, um, people were already feeling the impacts of the crisis. And so people went to the library, but it sounds like that particular daytime is really popular and a lot of people go. And then, yeah, and there were a couple of young people who were there that Teresa knew that she could win to get a library card. So props to Teresa. Um, but yeah, I think there's a lot of potential for that library, but not, I think, people feel good to go. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in the future to work in partnership with folks downstairs or get more of the community to come, because they definitely want to be there. I think a lot of people don't know what's there. Um, and we talked to the folks there about that.
Oh, yeah. We even had the opportunity to talk to the Boys and Girls Club, um, which is downstairs from the library. And, you know, we were, you know, just brainstorming and talking about some things that we could work on to connect with the kids that are in attendance with the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm sure much more to follow once we, you know, get over this. And we'll look forward to celebrating, um, a hundred years with the library, um, Library Week, um, to follow. So thank you. Um, I do have Victoria here. Would you like to give us some updates? Hi, Victoria.
Uh, I'm, I don't really have an update right now. I'm just here to listen. But thank you.
Hi, Victoria.
Hi.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
We're happy to have you. Okay, so back to Joseph and Shayla. Do you have any announcements and communications?
I think we covered the upcoming events, uh, during the P D L S is a big one. And, and again, a week from today, streaming Storytime on Grace Book. Uh, Facebook slash City Library.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did, I know that this came up, but we were scheduled, our last meeting, we were in the process of scheduling a combination, combined meeting with the Park and Rec. Where are we with that? And it's still possible to still hold that using via Zoom.
I think it's worth a try.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think it would be awesome if we can do it before summer so that everybody together can see what our approach to summer is. Right now, we're on a track with about four different contingencies. And just real quickly, if, if things stay the way they are today, obviously it's going to greatly impact the way we deliver services. There's a chance that, that the next order from the health officer might relax certain standards and, and limit small gatherings, which case that will reshape how we do summer learning. Um, if it, if it loosens more broadly, it'll give us, uh, you know, closer to what we would normally be doing. So we're, we're building those contingencies, both on the library side and recreation side. So we like to, it would be, that makes sense to give an update to both. Point, we were looking at, at early May. Uh, we might, might try to make that mid-May a little bit, give us a little bit more time to flush out the plans that we're working on now. The beautiful thing about Zoom is, you know, people are, tend to be doing nothing else right now. So hopefully we'll, we'll get a quorum on both sides for that.
Okay. So do we need to pick a date to mid-May or you guys will be taking care of that?
Is there a day of the week that works best? And we were, we were talking about getting together on a Saturday morning and making it a social event. Obviously that's not gonna happen. So if, if a weekday evening is more convenient, we're, we're certainly flexible. Yeah, we're, we're, we're standing by. So we, we can.
Thursdays are not good for me and.
I think we can, like, keep it, um, the Saturday morning, um, and via Zoom still.
Okay. We won't have breakfast, but we could, yeah, we can have a virtual breakfast.
Not the
We can have a virtual breakfast.
Not the weekend of Mother's Weekend, Mother's Day.
Okay.
Agreed.
We will, uh, we will. So this is a word on April twenty-first. If we'd shot for mid-May, it would be before our next trustees' meeting. Would you rather do it after our next trustees' meeting or before it? Or in place of it?
We can, we, we can use that as our meaning in place of it.
Yeah, I would prefer to do it.
Yeah. I would, yeah. Something different.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. What about trustee, um? I'm so bad with names.
Louis Vivar.
His alcohol is first name.
You good with that, Alex?
Alex, hi Alex. Is he there?
Yep, I'm okay with it.
Okay. How are you holding up from school?
Uh, not gonna lie, it's, uh, it's boring because you're just being cooped up in your own home the entire time, but online learning is not too bad. It's just boring.
Hanging there. Good to see you.
Okay, so it sounds, sounds great. Um, so our next meeting, um, our next Library Board of Trustees meeting will be a commissioners' meeting where we're inviting others. Um, and so, you know, as our next topic is agenda building, what should be, you know, kind of the agenda for that meeting as others will be participating? So definitely, um, COVID nineteen updates, um, would be key.
Summer plans?
Summer plan, yes.
Yeah, I, I think that probably will, will fill an entire meeting, just focusing on our contingency plans for, for summer programming on both library and recreation. It's, it's huge. It's a huge part of the year for both library and recreation. And I think fill up a lot of time just talking about that one topic between recreation and, and summer camps. Um, and like, in the library's summer learning program. So I, I would suggest maybe holding it to that topic.
Okay.
Yeah, just keep us to that because it's very broad.
And, and we'll have potentially ten people plus engaged in this.
Engaged and asking questions. Yes, definitely. So we'll leave it at the, um, summer planning. But I'm pretty sure, you know, um, you know, given the pandemic, we will start off with some COVID nineteen updates.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Do you guys, for the Park and Recs, do you guys have some sort of idea what your summer is going to look like?
Um, absolutely none. We, we're, we're going down four different paths, just like on the library with what it would look like if the shelter place order is extended. Um, what we, we, we experimented a lot over the spring break with a lot of virtual recreation opportunities for the, for the kids that was pretty popular. So we would probably expand on that, but we're gonna have contingencies. If everything stays the same, would be one contingency. If the order is loosened up a little bit, that would allow smaller groups of children. We will try to do a modified summer youth program. Um, if the order is modified enough to allow us to have larger, more traditional, we'll, we'll try to keep it as close to last summer or, or typical summer experience as we can. One of the things we're very sensitive to is so, as you know, more than anybody here, so many young families are unemployed right now. And, and the cost, you know, assuming that everyone goes back to work in June, July, um, that doesn't necessarily mean people have the means to pay for the cost of summer camps. And that's something we're very sensitive to and we're exploring ideas how And that's something we're very sensitive to and we're exploring ideas how we, we, we don't really have, we've never anticipated an event like this, so we don't have the capacity right now to, to address that. But that's something that, that's weighing heavy on our hearts because we wanna serve as many people in the community as possible. And I know as, as parents return to work, and if you got a six, seven, or eight-year-old at home, you're not hopefully gonna leave them at home. And hopefully we will provide some options for that, too.
The reason why I ask is so kind, so that way two entities can have some sort of, you know, of, of, uh, where are we working at as comparing our agenda with your agenda? So that way we're not everywhere when we meet. So if you guys have something in plan and it sounded like Chileans have something in plan.
Right, yeah. We, we've talked in excruciating detail. I'll use an example. We have aquatics is one of our most popular programs on recreation. Those classes are full. If the shelter in place order is, is modified and allows us to have some access to the pool, it's gonna look a lot different and probably greatly limit the number of folks that we can have in those programs just for some social distancing. Because normally, again, we're bringing large groups in. You ever go to the, the locker room or the, the bleachers? There are a lot of folks that converge on the pool for this. So we'd have to, we have a contingency to, to limit maybe one parent allowed. And then really limiting the access to locker room to one at a time and making sure there's ample spacing for the kids participating in programs. They're not all clustered together, which they typically would. That's, that is the way this one lesson's run. So, yeah, we're looking at every possible scenario for the summer.
Thank you.
And we're trying to be as optimistic as we can. And, and hopefully we should all hear an update from the public health officer by, by the beginning part of May. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what he's gonna say, but we should hear an update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. So if there are no, and if there are no additional comments or concerns, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Carefully well.